I'm here.
Actually, we're running a couple of minutes late. We're running a couple of minutes late, but it's okay. I don't think we're expecting anybody else. I mean, we've got a quorum. All right. Who do we have on the video? Is Kristen on video or on remote? Oh, okay. All right. And we have two other video, uh, two other, uh, remote, uh, people? Public. Okay. All right. Okay.
I don't have my speaker on. I'm sorry. We can either give the updates on some of the applications to you at the beginning or as they come up on the application.
We could do them as they come up. Yeah. All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Tony Frankelangio. This is the Berlin, Town of Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals for November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We have some items on the agenda tonight. What we're going to be doing is, uh, uh, going into, uh, new business and lis- listening to all the items on the agenda in the order that they were received. Once we go through, uh, the hearing on each application, uh, we'll close the hearing on that application and then we go into old business. And we vote on the applications that were heard during the new business portion of the meeting. Everybody get that? Listen to the applications, stop, then vote on them. We can't introduce any new information in the second part of the meeting. So if we have something to say about an application, plus or minus, or whatever it is, it has to be during the new business portion of the meeting. Once we close the hearing on the application, we can't introduce any new information. So, you know, look that be, uh, be aware of that and let that be, uh, uh, something to, to, uh, that you could follow. Uh, Maureen, I don't know if you want to do a roll call for the people that are listening out in La La Leon?
Uh, Paul, Paul will do the roll call. He's your CEO now.
Paul, thank you.
Here, Antonio.
Here.
Here, Lenny Tubbs.
Here.
Were you white side?
Here.
Christine Mazada.
Christine should be joining shortly.
Brian Mattson. Brian Zelik. Hunter Muthena.
And.
Oh. Michael.
Michael will be acting, uh, as, he's an alternate?
No.
You're a full-time member, right? But we don't have any alternates available. Okay, so we've got four. That's a quorum and we can go ahead and start with that. If everybody's okay with that.
We can certainly give you the updates at the forum.
Okay.
You want to wait for the, their app, you know? I, I think there'll be some postponements. Crux of the matter.
Oh.
Yeah.
You want to address each other, the first one?
First one, yeah. So three ninety-eight Chamberlain Highway, ZBA twenty twenty-three seventeen. The applicant sent us an email to extend the hearing to the January twenty-third meeting.
Okay. So ZBA twenty twenty-three dash seventeen is going to be postponed to January twenty-third.
This is a request to postpone, right? We don't have to postpone it.
So it is our recommendation that, um, the postponement, um, i- we have no, staff has no objection to the postponement. The applicant has applied to the Planning and Zoning Commission and is scheduled to be heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission before your next meeting in January. Um, and the special permit application that they've applied the planning and zoning for may resolve the, um, issues of the, um, order.
May I suggest that there might be people here that might want to speak up about the cease and desist option that we have? I mean, we could, we could be discussing that as well.
That sounds good.
The applicant is just not here. So that's.
Uh, if anybody has anything to say for their record on this application, uh, you can certainly, uh, you know, voice, uh, your comments and it'll be recorded and it'll be taken into the, uh, January meeting if we go ahead and continue this to January. Does anybody have any, uh? Uh, you gotta, well, come on in and, uh, come on up, state your name, uh, sign in and then you can use the microphone over there. Uh, but you gotta sign in over here. Or, yeah, you can sign in over there. We got all these rules we gotta follow.
Would have mentioned Christine Mazada just during the zoom.
Oh, she did.
Hello, I'm here.
Just in time.
Uh, good evening. My name is Raymond Zesa. Uh, I live adjacent to the property in discussion, uh, not right next door, uh, three seven four Chamberlain Highway. So my, my first question is, I'm not completely up to date is what just happened. Uh, we were advised it was a, uh, microphone. Better. Okay.
You have to really lean into that.
Okay.
And we do have the clip right next to you, which might pick up better if you hold it, if either one work.
Okay, that's a lot better. Yeah.
Better.
Okay, so anyhow, um, I, I guess my first thing is I have a question is I'm not fully clear as to what kind of just happened. I know that, uh, there was an application for a change of zoning in the property next door of our, our, our home. And that's why we wanted to show up to, uh, get more information and voice our opinion on it. But I understand that it's been postponed now or what, what exactly is going on? And a couple of other things were mentioned about, about a petition, I guess, or.
Well, you can speak to that.
Thank you.
There was an application to appeal the order, cease and desist order from the CEO. There was no application for a zone change. It was just to, to appeal the CEO order, cease and desist of the commercial business operation at the site.
Okay, um, could you clarify that for me again? Tell me exactly what that meant?
So there's two applications that have been made for the property at three ninety-eight Chamberlain Highway. The, the zoning officer sent a cease and desist order to the property owner. And that cease and desist order was appealed. The property owner has also applied to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a separate commission, for a new special permit use, which is for the garden center. I don't have the application in front of me as far as exactly what it's called, what they, they explain it as, but so that's a separate application that you also should have gotten a notice with regard to. That's the one you might have gotten a notice for. They might not have sent it out yet because they're not scheduled for P and Z yet.
Right.
So, um, so they, and the application to ZB, uh, to P and Z might resolve the enforcement issues with site plan issue, with site plan modification.
Okay, so there's a cease and desist, um, existing now against the, the property owner for whatever's going on in the, in the property right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And they've appealed the cease and desist as being incorrect.
Okay.
That's what an appeal of a cease and desist order is. The person who gets the cease and desist order disagrees with it.
Sure.
Valid.
Okay.
Um, the discussion as the, the commission has not yet, the board has not yet made a decision as to whether to postpone the hearing with regard to the appeal or not yet. That's, I think they wanted input to decide whether to
Okay.
postpone the season, the appeal hearing. We do know the applicant wasn't, um, wouldn't be in attendance.
Okay, so we haven't received any, um, a- any information, like you said, we may have received that has not been sent to anybody that we're aware of yet. So that probably hasn't been done.
The P and Z application, right. We got the application in, but when the public hearing, when a public hearing is set or um, even tentatively scheduled, the app, the applicant has to send notice on certain types of applications to the abiding property owners between ten and fifteen days before the public
Okay.
commences.
Right.
That public hearing, um, is maybe at the second P and Z meeting in December, but it's more likely going to be at the January P and Z meeting.
Okay, but either way, we'll, we'll get, we'll get a heads up on that.
You should, yes.
Great.
And we have the application in the office, so anyone can come and look at that as well.
Okay.
We haven't analyzed it yet.
Okay. Right, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Thank you for letting me.
Please come in, sign up. Sign in and go ahead and speak.
So I think at this time while you're deciding to whether or not to open the public hearing on the appeal, you, we have to just make sure that any comments are with regard to opening the public hearing and not about the appeal itself. Yeah. Until, unless you decide to read the call, open the public hearing.
Okay.
My name is Dorora Snay. My, uh, left side of the garden center runs all the way to my property, uh, line, my backyard. Okay, um, this, this initially started off as coming to the town with blight that when, um, the garden center had closed, this last time that it had closed, it was a mess back there. There was blight. I came to the town three or four times along with John O'Brien, who was my next door neighbor, the twelve in your drive. And nothing was done to have them cease and desist. They set up and rented out a business. I don't even know what the business name is for fencing. They had all stockpiled fences in the back there and we complained. And that property has been a year and a half that I've been complaining about blight. Um, John has picked pictures and for the same, last time I was there was six months ago. And nothing has been done and they're still operating a business. They set up a mailbox and they're getting mail there and this is still going on. And I want to know why it was allowed. I wanted to sell my prop, uh, my home. People were interested in it, some people, and when they saw the backyard that they declined. It's, it's a hindrance for me now to sell my property. And I'm just afraid that, uh, since this company, uh, the company has no regard for their neighbors, they've lied, they set up business without the proper going through PIN, uh, permits or whatever, and now they're renting it, it out. And it, it's been continuing now for over a year and a half. And complaints have been made. And here we are sitting a year and a half later. And I, I would like some answers, please. Silence?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we, we're not in a position to give you any answers. We've just gotten this brought to our, our, our attention as an appeal to a, to an, uh, a cease and desist order. So.
No, no, you just to get it, this was six months, six months ago.
We wouldn't.
It takes that long to, um, to have something be effective?
Yes. Sometimes it's a couple of years. It depends on.
So if I set up a business coming out of my house, it would take that long for me to, uh?
No, it depends on how it's communicated and it depends on when the town finds out. The town can police twenty thousand people.
File papers, we filed papers, we sent papers and we filed out, um.
But I think that's why a cease and desist order was issued.
No, not on that, on the blight issue, which was never corrected. That was never.
I don't know.
I, I don't.
That doesn't. Well, that doesn't.
And then, and then the other business. So the blight issue is never corrected and it's still not corrected. I, I don't understand. I, I feel like if someone could give me an explanation about why it was ignored for so long.
If I may, that there have been several ownership changes over the last five or so years. I'm looking from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, and then in twenty twenty-three, there were three different companies that owned it. That's not to say that there aren't some of the same principles behind those companies, but there are, there was definitely a foreclosure with regard to the property and some other changes as well. So, and with staffing changes and, um, and getting written, um, complaints then with backup and moving them through, this is not untypical or, um, enforcement matters. And the, they want, the issue today began, or this application and the scheduling for this evening started with the applicant and the LLC, the app that the property is in, not coinciding. So we didn't have ownership. The appeal didn't have, paper trail didn't connect. Um, the lawyer sent us paperwork today.
Sorry to interrupt.
The company.
What do you mean by it didn't connect?
Property is owned by DAT Enterprises, DAT Investments LLC, DAT with three Ts, Investments LLC. The appellant, person who filed the appeal is not, was not listed as a principal member or, um, representative of our DAT Enterprises when we looked up the trail of who's authorized to make application. The lawyer, his lawyer got involved today. It was Tom, Tom Kokomo, that was the applicant for the appeal. Um, today, there were updates to the Secretary of State's website and he is a principal, a principal or a member. He, he's listed now. We, we have the printouts today. So it got authorized. We had already said, we don't have authorization for your appeal. But P and Z, you don't have an authorization to make the appeal. So we're going to recommend the commission postpone it because you don't have an authorized applicant. And then it was late this afternoon, mid-afternoon, we got from that, from, through his lawyer that he is listed. So he was authorized to make that appeal. That, that's a, we, we've got to advise our boards and commissions that if the person making application isn't authorized to make that application, that they shouldn't be hearing the issue. Well, so it was a gl- it was an issue that it wouldn't have been a valid hearing or we would have, it could have been challenged, I should say.
From what I understand, that that property as a garden center was grandfathered in and.
A garden center isn't allowed use in the zone by special permit.
Could you say that again, please?
The year, it's a special permit use in the zone and the special permits are granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That building was built in nineteen fifty-five. That, the building where the great, uh, garden center now was built in nineteen fifty-five. Uh, when, when, um, if, if you have that information, when was the, um, Department of Zoning established in the town of Berlin? Was that be, before, uh?
The zoning ordinances, the zoning ordinance were first established in nineteen forty-four. It may or may not have had that as a special permit use at that time. I don't, I doubt it because it was probably a farm zone.
The zone, zoning back then was not.
It was, there were about three zones in town, you know?
Well, from your package.
Residential, commercial and farming. So.
The applicable exemption or the, uh, the permit
Yes.
in your package is dated two thousand sixteen.
And I also understood that that building was a house at one time. I did some research with bedrooms and the Johnson family owned that property for years, for years. I mean, this goes way back.
They ran the garden center, I think, most of the board probably is well aware of that. Well aware of the, it was Johnson Garden.
There's been several runs, several residents in, in Berlin that have been converted on Farmington Avenue with the businesses. It's not uncommon.
Uh, again, I just have to reiterate that I think the commission or the board needs to, um, determine if you're going to open this public hearing and if you are, then we'll take testimony with regard to the uses and the history and, and that for the record and, I mean, that's the, the, the board's choice. It is a time period before January.
So a question I have in regards to the company that's back there that's, that's set up, you know, as a fencing company or whatever, or is this the one that's filing the, the appeal?
The owner of the property.
Okay.
They're filing for appeal.
Eddie was the appeal. He's, oh, um, filed as the owner. Then when we tracked the ownership, that was the secretary, going through the Secretary of State's site and finding out who is this LLC. And making sure that the person, uh, the signature on the application is someone authorized to find.
So Walpole Outdoors is DAT?
No, DAT is the property owner. Walpole is the tenant.
Okay.
And the order was sent to both.
Yeah, sent to everyone in Walpole agency.
It's, our Walpole Outdoors is not a garden center.
Right.
So that's the reason why.
Why they're going to Planning and Zoning Commission to make the case that they are coming in, it's a garden, under the garden center. Um, as a, as part of a garden center use. Again, I don't have that application in front of me. I mean, it's.
So I'll just end with this one more person. So if I'm wrong, correct me and I apologize, but I understood that, uh, it was, it was the garden center and then they closed the garden center, the last, uh, people that were running it as a garden center. And then they rented it out, the partner, two partners, and then they rented it out to the company that's now there, but they never took out anything with the town to say that they could do that. So am I confused to, to think now that they want to change it after the fact they were running, renting it out? Is that what I'm hearing?
So mostly what they're applying for to P and Z is to change a list of accessory items at a garden center or nursery and have for sale. So they're trying to fit in the current items that Walpole deals with, to put that into garden center.
Well, a couple of years ago, had another people owning that before this one. And they had a cup, and I was here, I sat here, they had a couple of cans of dog food and a couple of little things, little gift things. And they told they couldn't sell it. Why? Why could they do that?
That was the twenty sixteen Planning and Zoning Commission determination, and that's why they need to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission rather than the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's the application they have pending with the Planning and Zoning Commission because the Planning and Zoning Commission makes that determination.
Right now that everybody understands what we're here for.
Yeah.
We're here to appeal a cease and desist order and that's it. That's what this, this is here for today. Okay, so alls we would do is decide whether the cease and desist order was done properly and we support it, or it was, there's something that's done improperly and we don't support it. And that's the only part of it that we're doing today. It wouldn't do anything with the property or, or anything like that, other than the cease and desist order would be valid and they'd probably go through the motions that they're doing right now after the meeting. They just took it before the meeting. And it's from what I, from what I'm reading and seeing, this thing's had a, a, a recent owner change again. It, and, and it's not uncommon with corporations that corporations can change names and have, I, I can put your name on it today and I can put his name on it tomorrow and put Maureen's name on it the next day and then take your name off. You're not there anymore, but you were there for a day as an owner. It's that easy to change corporation owners. It's, it's literally go online and put the name in there. They approve it.
Okay, well, thank you for your information and time. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. But I don't think you can open the hearing on this thing anyway.
You can, if you want to hear their.
Can you hear me?
That is a board.
Go ahead.
I just, if you give me one second, John.
Yeah, sure.
That is, uh, you know, the board's decision. If you want to hear testimony, um, I, because of the ownership issue early in the day, he did say we were going to recommend it not be opened because the application wasn't valid when we sent out that email. Um, and then ship is kind of out of the, the horse is out of the gate, right? Isn't that the same?
Yeah, yeah.
Once we asked for the extension from the applicant, applicant based on that.
Are they doing that just to buy time? Are they just trying to keep doing this, putting it in circles? If they're running a business right now?
Or that's the, the board to determine, um, yeah, like I said, we do have the pending application. That came in, in, in November or in October as well, right? The initial document for Planning and Zoning Commission came in. Yeah, at late October. So, you know, the similar time period.
How, how do we know how long they've been operating a business back there? Kind of.
Complaints came in.
Probably fourth of September.
Well, Walpole, uh, I'd say probably let, Floris. Who did you say? Defense company last summer? They started coming in late last summer?
Possibly late summer. Again, that's testimony for, that would
Yeah.
be if you open the appeal, I would want to bring that in. So I guess, I mean, I think.
I'm just asking questions after.
The horse is out of the game at this.
Can I say a few things and then you go out to your next? Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Okay, what, Dolores, my neighbor, poor vineyard, was say, trying to say is they took up shop and Tommy Kokamol basically let them, you know, and there it is, basically. New sign on the door, mailbox. Want the picture? I'll take more.
Uh, you're not open. This, this hearing is not open.
Okay. Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to, I think what we're, I think what we're leaning towards is having this hearing. Low-key right now. No, we're, no, we're just, you can make your comments, but we're having the, we're not going to open the hearing on this until Okay, and then towards the end of August. You want to save those for January. Correct. We have tractor trailer truck drivers sleeping there at night now. How'd you like that in your backyard? You know what I'm saying? We have trucks coming in and out of there, five thirty in the morning. I was awakened, you know, end of August, beep, 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 beep. They're loading up their trucks. I came down, Maureen remembers, I came down to the town hall, seven o'clock. Let me stop you, John. Okay. Um, I, I think we're leaning towards postponing this hearing until January. Okay. And, and I, and I think that's probably a proper thing to do because this thing has been going on for a long time. If we cut it short and have a hearing tonight, we could get, get into legal issues. Okay. I just, I just. So what I think, what I think we should do though is I want you to save that stuff because you're going to have to give that to the commission in January. But you're going to have to give it to the commission in January. We'll stamp it and put it in the record. I think, I think, like Maureen said, this problem could be resolved at the next planning and zoning. Possible, yeah. Because.
Actually, probably the J.
Okay.
Planning and zoning commission meeting because of the timing.
Can we get something done that's very important? Dolores is getting field mice into their house now. They're coming from the nursery. We have fox, coyotes, uh you name it, running through our house, houses, she was right next door to me, into the nursery. I have bait traps, mice traps around my house because of the nursery. When I was cutting the grass this past fall, what do I see? Bice in my backyard from the nursery, the fox, the coyotes, everything, coming from the nursery. We've had it. Thank you. They filled the wetlands. Dolores gets water in the backyard. I got a lot of water and up in your drive, their backyard's again flooded because of the wetlands that were filled in. You know, like, one house has three inches of water, never had water in their basement before, wetlands was filled in. Roughly three hundred to three hundred feet wide, hundred and fifty feet right to the brook. State of Connecticut is calling me back tomorrow. I've been touching them. The Army Corps of Engineers is involved. Thank you. Our town is, like I say, it's not doing anything about it. No, you're 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 wrong. You're wrong, uh John. This is not, this is not. Planning and zoning will will hear this next month, in January.
The frustrations that us.
I understand that, but we, us, us doing this petition tonight, this this uh appeal tonight, no matter which way it goes, is not gonna stop anything until he ends up going through planning and zoning next month or in January.
Sorry.
So that's where we're, that's where we're at right now, where we can't, we're we're kinda stuck. You know, we can do something and we can, we can, we can enforce the planning and zoning officers uh cease and desist, but probably won't end up doing much good until, because there's lawyers involved now. Okay, and that's what's gonna happen. Our twenty-one zoner tractor trailer truck driver sleeping there. Yeah, well, it's unfortunate, but we can't, we can't tell, we can't tell them out of here, John.
Just for, just for the record, the zoning officer has very little um ability to do that either. And and it is something that in order for us as zoning enforcement, we also have to go through a legal process in order to take um physical action, such as getting a vehicle towed. We'd have to get an order from the, we can do that probably from the court.
So zoning here in December, or is that gonna come here in January?
Planning and zoning commission, at this point, it's most likely with the planning and zoning commission schedule, we have a lot of pending applications and rather we've had meetings going till almost midnight for months now. Um, it will probably be on the January planning and zoning commission meeting, which occurs prior to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, that's too bad for the the people that live around. I I I feel your pain. I would be more than you know, about that, because that's just.
Well, we're kinda stuck. We have to wait to see.
No, of course, of course. It's just, you know, I wish they could make a precedent with that and and address it, especially if it's becoming more of blight and then, you know, more, I I would say if there's tractor trailers pulling in and out, and I'm a neighbor, I'm like, um I I know when I see a tractor trailer in my neighborhood, unless they're delivering it for ABC, I'm like, what are you doing here? Like, certain time and place for everything and, you know, I mean, everyone has to start taking responsibility for everything and you know, we can't just throw our hands up in the air. The fact remains that they.
Yeah.
The owner is not in compliance with the order at this time. So they are still subject to fines. We are not, we are not releasing that by
No.
postponing the the.
Um, I think it does say the order, an appeal say the order. For fi, for fining.
This is why I was concerned about hearing it tonight.
Heard that from, like, I got that.
So I think we should have a discussion whether we postpone or we're open as to what it means for the fines, given a concern that they might be extending the timetable in a manipulative way. That what I saw in the emails is that there's no sense of urgency on this? Or that there's a sense of urgency that takes a second or or backseat to other priorities for the owner? And that concerns me. So you were saying that they're not gonna get fined if it's? If we postpone. And it goes in limbo. Yes.
We're gonna open it. Alan, a favor of opening this?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Paul, you wanna take a roll in that? It was unanimous.
There were no nays, then.
Okay.
Yeah, I um, I'm just trying to contact the town attorney just to get guidance without the applicant here as to whether that um leaves vulnerability without them here to um make the defense there.
I I think there's precedence.
Well, we we can open it, but we're not gonna close it.
Right, we're, there's precedence for opening the audience.
We can open it, but we don't have.
Of citizens and not to concur or to to go to final business on it.
But if we open it and we don't close it, can you still?
We get two extensions, right?
Right, but can you still initiate fines?
No.
Okay, well, all right, then then, you know.
That's the point is moving.
You can open it, but it's not gonna do much bit of good until it goes to planning and zoning anyway, so.
Did just go to open that file, so.
No, we opened it. We just can't.
Hear more testimony, you know, now you can hear.
We can hear more testimony, but we've got the testimony uh from John and he's got some pictures and maybe he can put those into the record. And if we put whatever other stuff that we wanna put into the record, we could put in, and we're gonna leave the thing open. Okay, and then we'll close it in January if we continue it to January.
I think it's more responsive to the public to open the meeting.
Town attorney uh gives you plenty kind of recommendation. I don't wanna do anything that isn't gonna hurt the process. I just don't wanna hurt the process, because I I can see what's what's going on here.
Yeah, that's the only reason I might reach out, because I don't have it.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the only reason I would even think of postponing it, it's not challenging the process, because like you said.
That's very good point.
If it goes to planning and zoning.
You still can't hit it in the pocketbook though.
See you next month. I think this is.
However, chances are the property would not be in compliance by the time meeting came along.
Planning and zoning would not let that.
Yeah, I'm gonna step out.
I I wish I, I could, I would would like to say one comment, because I was there a couple of years ago and they were selling these metal carousels with these little bears going around at Christmas time. Planning and zoning would not let them sell those at a garden center. You know, it was a little toy me, toy carousel or toy Ferris wheel or whatever the hell it was. So I got a feeling that planning and zoning is gonna put the hammer on this.
That's what I was meaning, but.
But that's just, you know, I'm speaking out of line, but I mean, but still, that's my thought. And I, like I said, you know, not doing anything that would cause us to get into uh a reverse direction is what we need to do.
Yeah.
Now the pictures and everything are available to.
Well, plus, what you said about the animals, we said about the truckers and uh everything else, it's 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 all open. And planning and zoning has that.
And I think the water issue too is is if if they fill in the.
Fill in wetlands?
Fill in the wetlands and then affecting their.
Big time.
Prop, that's, that's really.
That's big time.
So, didn't that go through inland wetland commission? I feel like a lot of things are being brought up tonight that aren't really, you know, within the scope of what what we're, what we're here for or what we can do.
No, they're, that's correct, but what what this information that's submitted, okay, uh is gonna be for the record and it's available to the planning and zoning commission when they do their review of this whole thing. So they're gonna go to the planning and zoning commission to get a special permit and, you know, they, planning and zoning commission is gonna look at uh what the information is available on this particular issue, and they're gonna see some of that, because we opened this.
I guess the more information we give them, the better, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the town attorney is on um on my phone. She'll she'll log in if we need her, but she did say that there would easily be a due process problem without the applicant here at the, to here, take testimony and.
Why is this any different than anybody else who didn't show up?
Yeah.
We could hear if somebody didn't show up or scheduled it, scheduled hearing. We could open it at any other time. This has been, never been finished. The process has never been brought up before.
I put you on speaker, Jennifer. Or do you wanna log in? Okay. All right, sorry. Thank you. I didn't realize you are in the car. I'm sorry.
I I feel the same way.
Yeah, well.
The applicant was on the docket tonight.
Yeah.
She'll log in if y'all just hold the meeting for a second.
Jennifer.
That's Attorney Coppola from Corporation Counsel.
Yep.
And what a great way to keep extending it by not showing up.
Getting on, she's not quite connected yet.
Hi, it's Jennifer. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes, we hear you, Jennifer.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure whether you could see me or not. I can't see myself, so um I am in my car. I apologize. Um, because I was driving when I received, um, was contacted by Ms. Juicy. So um as I understand it, um, there's an appeal pending and the appellate is not present. Um, you should not be opening a public hearing where you do not have um your applicant or your appellant. In this instance, um, as it is an appeal, it's not appropriate to do that. Um, they're, they're not uh present to uh present the appeal. Um, they are not present to hear any um questions from the board. They're not present to hear any um, any testimony that might be given by the public or any, or to respond to any questions asked by the public um, that might be interested, who are in attendance, whether they be in in favor of the appeal and opposition. It it really is, is not appropriate um to you, for you to proceed on a public hearing when you don't um have an an appellant. In this instance, again, it's an appeal, but if you had a variance, um, you wouldn't open a public hearing without the applicant present. It's, it's not appropriate to do that.
That's, that's actually news to us on the board, because in the close to twenty years that I've been on this board, we've uh we've opened several uh variance hearings without the the applicant here.
Well, that's.
They don't, they don't show up. If they don't show up and they're on the agenda, that's why should that be on, what? How could that be, you know, held against us? I don't, that doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so what it, what is in our power to get this moving forward? If, if, you know, if we go to open it in January and they choose not to show up again, I mean, how how can we reel this in and enforce uh them being there, ways of not being.
So, so I think that the issue that you have for tonight, my understanding is that uh they believe that the matter was going to be continued um based upon back and forth with staff. Um, if you do have a circumstance where somebody has been given notice and they've not communicated at all, um, and I guess I should have clarified that point, where they've not communicated at all and, you know, they've, they've not, it's been um on the agenda previously, uh they, they didn't show up, they were contacted, you know, uh about, again, about the next opportunity to be heard and then they don't show up again. Sure, I've had those circumstances um, where, you know, they're not showing up to to proceed on their application for variance. In that instance, you know, you certainly can deny the matter without prejudice to them resubmitting. Um, it's, you know, that's fine to do that and that happens all the time, but it's my understanding that for tonight on this appeal, um, you know, because of the fact that there was an issue about being able to prosecute the appeal as far as the appellant was concerned, that there was some back and forth. Um, and, you know, again, there was conversation about continuing the matter, given when the resolution and of the issue had occurred. So it just really is not appropriate to to open it up. Because, you know, that there was uh that back and forth. But I understand what you're asking me. You're asking me in the variance scenario, because I know it happens sometimes that people file um a variance application and then they don't show up. Um, sure, yeah, so, so, you know, you kind of, you give them that second opportunity and then I think it's fine. Um, you know, to simply deny the matter without prejudice to them resubmitting. Does anybody have any question about that? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Frank Langia.
Sure.
I just wanted to let you know that we all voted unanimously to open this, but we haven't heard a thing yet.
Okay.
So, I mean, we don't have to, we can postpone it, we can close it, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, you can, you can, uh, you can uh simply uh move to continue it uh based upon the recommendation of counsel uh to give them an opportunity to again to be present and to prosecute the appeal. Yep. That's fine.
Can I just add something that I wanna make sure that everyone's aware of? I know several board members are. I'm not sure everyone is or the entire audience, but there are the statutory timelines. So it's not a forever, if something is continued, it's not a forever continuance. It is, it must be opened within a certain period of time. It must be, once a hearing is opened, it must be closed within its own period of time by statute and then there's um extension days built into that statute as well. And um I think that's part of what um is allowed for in and of course Attorney Coppola can correct me. I don't wanna speak for her, but I think that's what's allowed for in a, in providing due process and making sure the due process is um equitable from both sides. Because we have those statutory time limits, but we also have the um applicants or the board fined by time periods as well.
Well, within that due process, I mean, what about the neighbors, the witnesses? I mean, this is their time to come. I mean, I I I think it's very inconvenient for them and do they have to come here and sit every month in hopes that? every month in hopes that the, uh, you know, the person shows up? I mean, if it's due process, they showed up and their stake is their, their neighborhood. Um, do they have to keep coming? You know, and eventually they don't wanna come anymore because they have something going on, family, et cetera. I mean.
Since we opened it, we forced it.
So this, this is, this is what I, and again, you know, I make, I make recommendations. Um, you could take the advice of counsel or not take the advice of counsel. I, I think I've said that to you before. Um, so, you know, you, you, you've got a circumstance here again where this is an appeal of a decision. Um, so the per, the, the entity that's directly impacted is the appellant, right? Um, you know, and I understand what you're saying in a, in a, in a variance scenario. Um, but the fact of the matter is, 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 you know, there are opportunities if, if somebody cannot appear, um, in terms of an interested neighbor, um, an interested abutting property owner. Um, say, say for instance, they're gonna be away, um, at, at the next meeting and they cannot appear. They can't submit written comment at any time. Um, so, uh, during the pendency of the application, that, that's fine. They just, you know, you just can't consider something after you close the public hearing. Um, they do have the opportunity to do that. Um, so I wanna make sure that, you know, the folks who are there that are interested in this matter understand that, that they can actually submit correspondence. It gets made part of the record. It gets distributed to the commission. It gets distributed to the appellant. Um, and, and certainly then in that way, it's put into evidence. Um, because that's something that a lot of people are not aware of, that they have the opportunity to do that. Um, the other thing that's great about Berlin is, is the hybrid meeting has survived beyond COVID. So you have the opportunity for the public to appear remotely. They can not, not only, you know, if they're, if they're unable again to appear. Um, I know some people can't appear via video conference, but they can dial in, they can call in and be heard, um, as well, um, during the public hearing at the next meeting. So, you know, there's, there's opportunities, um, for them to get their comment in. Um, it's just, you know, the, the, the issue you run into is if you take comment and you don't have the appellant, again, with the appellant sort of understanding that, um, they were asking for the matter to be in, in a way, I get, and again, I don't know all the details because I didn't see all the back and forth about this. Um, but, and I, I defer to Ms. Juicy with regard to that, where they thought they didn't need to appear tonight and then you're taking in, um, comment that they're not having, you know, in real time, an opportunity to respond to and maybe ask any questions that they have about the comments being made to you. Um, that, that just is not something I would ever recommend that you do. Um, I don't think it's appropriate. Um, and, you know, again, it's, it's their application. Um, whether it's an appeal application or variance application and, and just in terms of that timeline for your understanding, I think you kinda know what that is. So it's sixty-five days, um, to open the public hearing, thirty-five to conclude, and then sixty-five to decide. Uh, but the statute does provide, uh, an additional sixty-five days. Um, and, and if that sixty-five days is used, the applicant has to agree to it. So it's not something that, that you as the agency can use without their, um, consent to do so. So, um, just an aside on that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you Attorney Coppola.
Would you like me to stay on or?
It would probably be helpful if you have the time to do so.
Okay.
That's Maureen speaking.
Well, based on that, uh, discussion and that comment, I, uh, I, I guess I'm gonna recommend that we open this hearing. Everybody decided to vote to open the hearing. Uh, I guess I'm gonna recommend to just postpone until January and not hear anything until January. And if anybody has any comments or any issues, um, you know, you can't direct them to us. It, they have to be directed to the town of Berlin and the town of Berlin can share it with every commission that's involved that needs to have that information.
They, they can direct correspondence directly, I mean, to the zoning board of appeals as well, you know, directly and will take it in as testimony for the, the hearing and.
Well, yeah, you can do that too. You can do that too. And, and can that testimony, can that testimony be shared with the planning and zoning commission? Is this what I'm saying? Is what I'm asking.
We can.
Okay, so.
Especially if that's what somebody would like it to be shared.
I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to follow, uh, uh, Counselor Coppola's, uh, recommendation and, and say that let's keep the thing open. We opened it. We haven't heard anything, but if you have anything to say, wait till January to say it. But in the meantime, if you need to send information to the planning and zoning commission that can be shared with the planning. If you need to send anything to the town of Berlin that can be shared with the planning and zoning commission, you know, do it through the zoning board of appeals or do it through the town of Berlin, uh, building department or wherever you want, planning and zoning department.
All come in through planning and zoning department.
Okay.
So I will make a mo, a motion to continue the public hearing until next month.
I'll second.
I'll second their motion.
Their motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
All right, you mean January's meeting?
Well, I think we have to go through successive months.
Okay, so we will have.
Don't have a January meeting. Don't have a December meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Don't have a scheduled December meeting.
Motion to continue until the next planning and zoning board of appeals, zoning board of appeals meeting.
No, we got a meeting with Santa Claus in December. That, that, that.
And, and that January meeting date, Ms. Juicy, is what date? Just so the public knows. Okay, so that's January twenty-third.
January twenty-third, correct. Yeah. So you made a motion to go to the January twenty-third meeting.
I seconded.
Mm-hmm. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Ask for a opposed. Want to oppose?
Everyone said aye.
Hey, hey, just.
And, and.
For the record.
Make sure we don't hear an opposed, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Juicy, why don't you share your email address on the record with anybody who might be interested in sending in any, um, written comment?
Okay, it, M, do you wanna, or, well, we'll do mine. It's M. G. I U. S is in Sam, T is in Tom, I. At berlancet.gov. And any correspondence can be sent to that email address and/or Pauline Morbidelli, who is also listed on the website. I'm not spelling verbally and, but we're both available and our office, um, can receive comments through the office as well and through the mail.
Also, any pictures or any, anything that you have that you're, you're ready to hand in? If you want, you can leave them with us tonight. It'll become part of packets.
Okay, uh, moving on to the next application. ZBA twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen, fourteen seventy-four Farmington Avenue. Map nine dash one block twenty-eight lot thirty-one B. Skander Derikovic.
Thank you.
Fashas LLC is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages location approval for a restaurant with a patio liquor permit for Berlin zoning regulation eleven B. The property is in the CCD two zone. Property is owned by Alan and Eldon Sekunjin.
I make one comment?
Yeah.
Correction. Mistakenly, when you write a, a agenda before Thanksgiving, I put the wrong address. It's not fourteen seventy-four, seven ninety-seven Farmington Avenue.
Legalized.
Seven ninety-seven Farmington Avenue is correct.
Seven ninety-seven.
Seven ninety-seven.
Fourteen seventy-four is almost up by Worthy to Ridge.
That's, we, we had it last, I used a template and I didn't change it on the agenda. Legalized was correct.
The map block lot.
And that's correct as well.
Correct.
Okay. Speaking.
We do have a second comment on this application.
Yeah.
I'm gonna.
Sure, yeah. Well, we didn't, as, uh, the staff comments mentioned, we didn't receive the notice to property owners during time of that writing that was uh, November twenty-second, but the applicant did come in yesterday, provide that information to us. It looks like they submitted it to the post office on November twentieth. It's two days short of the minimum requirement of ten days. They didn't meet the exact minimum timeline to get it to abutting property owners purchase.
So we also would recommend that this item be postponed for public notice. This one I.
Yes, this is the one we.
That was the one, the other one.
Yes.
Okay, so the town, and the town got notice on this one or no?
The other applicant.
So you're recommending this be postponed for?
Due process, and again, another due process where the applicant did not fulfill their obligation of sending out the abutting property owners' notice between, in the ten to fifteen day period prior to the public hearing opening. And with it being mailed, holiday week, right before Thanksgiving, very likely that the, um, abutting owners may have only gotten their notice in the last couple of days. And therefore they're, may or may not have knowledge. Did we get, um, proof of the sign being posted outside the property and when that was done?
No.
Okay, and we don't have proof of posting of the sign out.
When did it, when did it have to go up?
Yeah.
When did the sign have to go up?
Yeah.
Ten days is wrong.
So.
Till the eighth. All right, now the.
It would be the eighteenth.
It was up.
Oh, the sign was up.
It was definitely up.
Yeah, it was up, yeah.
I go by it every day.
Yeah. Sign was up, yeah.
That's what you're doing. You're looking at.
I see that every morning and I.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Notice of the owner.
The only issue is the date that was filed.
So I, I, that being said, the, if the dates are off, due process, if we're gonna do this, we need to postpone this meeting. So I'd make a motion that we postpone this meeting till the January twenty-third meeting.
This item.
This item on the agenda, what's the item number?
Twenty-two-three dash eighteen.
There you go.
Yeah.
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Just postpone to January. Okay, application C. Uh, ZBA twenty-twenty-three dash nineteen and twenty-twenty-three dash twenty. One fifty-two Sprucebrook Road. Map twenty-two dash one block one fifty-three lot seven C. Connor Mahoney is requesting variances for twenty-twenty-three dash nineteen, a side yard setback of twenty-five point two feet for an enclosed storage room and twenty-twenty-three dash twelve, a rear yard setback of thirty-seven point one feet for an enclosed storage room. Where a side yard setback of thirty feet and a rear yard setback of fifty feet is required for Berlin zoning, for Berlin zoning regulation five eight ten and an R forty-three zone. Speaking for the application.
Just to clarify, the second variance should be twenty-twenty-three dash twenty?
Growed up.
Nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen and twenty. That's right. Jesus, why am I saying that? I should have.
So, for the record and for all of the commission members to understand, the applicants do receive in their package, uh, application materials, a checklist of items to submit and that they have to do prior to the public hearing. Um, and generally speaking, whenever available, we do go over that with the applicants when they come into the office. It's before they apply or the day they apply and this applicant has done all the separate items as required. And we don't have a due process issue at this point.
Amen.
Wanted that, um, noted and I wanted you to know. With all the.
Your, your app, you're, I, I take your Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
No, this gentleman over here is waving his hands up and down. Are you the applicant for? Okay, your, your application's been postponed till the January meeting. Nope.
Uh, applications should have been filed earlier.
No, the, the, the mail should have went out. The notices should have went out earlier. I don't, I don't think there's anything that needs to be said. Your application, your notices did not go out in a timely manner. Therefore, we have to wait for the, your neighbors to, to know what's going on. And I didn't even get anything yet.
May not be within.
Got it for the last one? So, until they, until the ma, uh, the, the neighbors have the time to to look, to have the mail delivered and have the due process done, we can't do it. Hey. To Mahoney.
Sorry, this is all new to me. Um, alright, so I applied for a, an application for a, a zoning variance for the, the like I proposed, um, addition to the storage space in the back. So currently there's a, on the town records, there's a ten foot by twenty foot, uh, and, uh, open porch. It was all rotted. Um, that has, it's being, uh, extended it towards the back three point nine feet so that I wanted to note that the existing setback for the rear is actually forty-one feet. Um, existing and it's changing to thirty-seven point one feet. So it's a change in three point nine feet. I'm sorry, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, three point nine feet. Um, lot is significantly undersized at fifteen thousand square feet, twenty-three acres. The required zone of R forty-three, um, which the minimum, minimum lot size for R forty-three is forty-three thousand square feet. Um, and they've required R, R forty-three setbacks make the lot almost unbuildable as shown on the property survey. Um, so for this, for this, I don't know, do you wanna go through one, uh, one line item at a time or? Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yep. Um, so from, for the side, the side setback, that is, that's only being changed by the length, uh, distance of the non-conformant is not being changed. Um, because of the change to the rear setback. And based on the new property survey, the town records, it went from twenty-five feet to twenty-five point two feet. So not, not really a change, but the setback on the side is not actually changing, just the overall length of the structure. Um, the rear setback, you're changing to, uh, as I mentioned, thirty-seven point one, thirty-seven point one feet from.
Forty-one.
Yeah, forty, I'm sorry, forty-one feet to thirty-seven point one feet, so three point nine total. Um, so the intent of this is to provide an adequate storage area. Um, so I can currently move all the things that are in my garage to the storage area to allow us to put our cars in the garage. Um, currently our cars are out in the driveway and we actually did have, uh, with all the auto theft and the car break-ins in town, we wanted to move our, um, cars inside the garage. Um, I don't know if I can give these to you guys now, but I actually have on video someone trying to break into our cars and break into our house, um, earlier this year. So we wanna do our best to try to get our cars inside the garage. Um, I mean, it's obviously getting to the point where people are smashing windows to get into cars, even if they're locked. Um, so we'd like to get our cars in the garage.
We can take them. You can, just can't have them back.
That's fine. I have copies.
So this, uh, existing closed porch that you have on here.
Yep.
That's pretty much.
That's, I've, I've personally watched it and yelled, yelled across the street to stop.
Yeah, so we actually, um, last year there was a car stolen off of.
Two different grounds.
Um, earlier this year, recently after, we, we posted this on a Facebook group. Um, we actually called the police, notified the police. The police came and put in a statement. They took, we've sent the video to the police. Um, one of our neighbors was actually driving by and stopped and asked if it was our house. Uh, recently after that, during the middle of the day, they pulled into their driveway and someone ran into their garage while they were in their car and tried to rip them out of the car and steal their car. Cause there was a car waiting for them and on their street. Um, so it's a little unsettling. So it's currently an open porch. I'm, we'd like to enclose it. Um, the point of extending it is to provide enough storage to put everything in there. It allows to get our cars in, in the garage.
And that porch was on, did it have existing cement already there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Staff comments indicated that building department noticed your activity, so you were. Caught in the act of actually building or?
Yeah, because it was, there was an existing structure, I didn't know that I needed a permit. Um, so the building inspector stopped by, um, he, we actually asked him if he wanted us to stop, he said, no, we can keep going at the time. Um, I did put an application for a permit, we went through all the town wickets and then went through zoning and got denied because of the rear setback requirement. Um, so at that point, I stopped all the work and then went through the paperwork to submit the application. Just trying to go through the, the right motions to.
We were, we were, we, we appreciate that, Connor.
Yeah.
His comment about the order of the agenda, not about your item.
I didn't even recognize you.
Go around.
He was about thirteen, fourteen last time I saw him, playing Little League baseball, bad group baseball.
I'll tell you what, I genuinely miss playing baseball.
I genuinely miss coaching.
Yeah.
Did it for thirty-one years.
I uh, never had children. At some point ago.
Be good.
Hopefully.
You know the game, you know the game.
Yeah. It was the one sport I was actually good at.
So for the record, the zoning officer has pulled up a photograph of the area on, on the screen. I'm not sure.
That we have it.
Yeah, they were also distributed in the zoning board of.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So Christine does have access to them as well.
So that, so the, so the. Alright, go ahead. Um, so the biggest difference is that the roof was actually raised to go to provide headroom. So the, the old roof was down below, um, the soffit of the other structure, there wasn't a lot of headroom there.
So you're vaulting.
Right.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any more questions for, uh, Connor?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you, thank you. Staff comments?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I was doing some other paperwork, but um, I just want to note that. Um, the commission, the, the board did receive the staff comments. Um, and include the application, which noted that the house is um. In lot that is fifteen thousand square feet, fifty thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet. In an R forty-three zone that requires forty-three thousand square foot lot. Um, and larger setbacks than a fifteen thousand square foot lot. Usually have the zone was, um, upgraded after the house was built. And the uh, staff comment, comments speak to the exist, the pre-existence of the patio with the roof. Um, at an unknown, we don't know at what point in time it was added to. Um, but uh, there was no exception to the zoning for that. That wasn't subject to an enforcement order at any time that we found, so presumably it would have been allowed at that time that it was built. We didn't find any record with regard to it.
Hey. Any other comments, uh, in, in opposition or in favor of the application? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on this application.
I'll second.
A motion made and seconded. Any other comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our last application is application. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, eighty-six Woodlawn Road map, ten dash two block eighty-three, lot eighteen A. David Camacho, Camacho Enterprises LLC is requesting a variance to allow a used car dealer and general repair business. On a lot of less than two acres, where two or more acres is required for Berlin zoning regulation six G three G in a BT one zone. The property is owned by J and S Enterprise Inc. in a BT one zone, speaking for the application.
Staff has comment for this application, so same as a previous one. A, and now the notices on the twenty-first of the month, that's also beyond the minimum point allowed by statute. Regulate.
Well, you have to, you know, uh, you treat it the same way you've treated the other ones, you're gonna have to just push it to January.
Therefore, I make a motion that we postpone this meeting to the January twenty-third meeting.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous.
Are they selling cars and stuff out of here now?
Did find enough.
There's unregistered cars on that lot.
Yeah, we did make mention to the applicant to remove those vehicles from the lot.
It's a car wash, right, yeah.
The, um, in a related matter, um, I think you may as well handle the. Information out tonight with regard to Public Act twenty-three. Well, twenty-three forty, okay, we will send it to you, but Public Act twenty-three forty has modified. Zoning Board of Appeals looking at location approvals for automobile uses.
In what way?
It's no longer required. Zoning Board of Appeals review of her location approval is no longer required. It's a simple zoning sign-off. For the location. The Ber- Berlin zoning regulations do have.
Because of the two.
Automotive uses is still listed as a special permit use in the zones that it's allowed. So the Planning and Zoning Commission will be reviewing for, on special permit uses. Um, when somebody is coming in for an automotive use, however, it's no longer under the purview or location approval by statute under. Um. Uh, Connecticut's actual general statute fourteen dash fifty-four. No longer requires zoning board of appeal location approvals be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals, and we do have a copy. Downstairs, well.
Well, no, I have a copy of my.
For your reference.
Send it to us.
It's one of the main things that this board is used to seeing and you see at. Several meetings a year, so.
Is this effective January one?
July one.
Oh, so.
It was already effective.
So why are we about to?
This application is actually for a lot size.
Oh.
So this is, that's why it's related, but it's not the application. But I wanted you to know.
So this, okay, so this is a totally, this is not a, a site plan approval, this is very, a variance.
That's a variance.
For a business, okay, so this is totally different than what we'd be listening to.
Yes.
Okay, now I got it. Takes a little while sometimes.
We understand. Especially when we have to balance it between P and Z and Z B A and figure out who gets to see what first.
Now, I have a question, we need to, uh. We, we need to, uh.
Did we, did we?
We closed the hearing on that.
We close it? Started talking.
We, well, we know, we, we postponed it to January.
I just wanted to make.
Uh, but no, I, we, I, the question I have is, you have about four or five months worth of meeting minutes here that.
We'll do that after we do the other stuff.
It can be approved if you're ready to approve them.
Okay, I just wanted to check that, check that. Okay, uh, let's go back to the. New business, uh, o- old, old business. Um. We have a, uh, the first application twenty twenty-three dash seventeen is moved to, to, uh.
January twenty-third, twenty-third, twenty-four.
Okay, uh, application, uh. Twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, seven ninety-seven Frampton Avenue has also moved to January twenty-third.
January twenty-third.
Uh, application Z B A twenty twenty-three dash nineteen and twenty twenty-three dash twenty. One fifty-two Sprucebrook Road map, twenty-two one block, one fifty-three lot seven C. Connor Mahoney is requesting variances for twenty twenty-three nineteen, a side yard setback of twenty-five point two feet. And twenty twenty-three twenty, a side yard setback of thirty-seven feet. Where, uh, a setback of thirty feet and fifty feet are required for Berlin zoning regulations. Do I have a, uh, a motion to approve this application?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, any discussion?
The comment that, uh.
The house looked a lot better than the pictures we saw in the.
Oh.
On the pla, on the card, it's, looks like he's gonna be doing improvements to the property.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved. Uh, Z B A twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, that is also moved to the January twenty-third. And, uh. Uh, again, on the minutes, we have minutes, I have minutes here in, in May of twenty-three. Where we did not have a quorum and we did not have a meeting, but there was minutes. Why do we have minutes? Was I here?
Yeah, because you did have a meeting, but you didn't have, like, we have to. We have to post.
Oh, I had to post them, okay, alright.
They, so, there was no meeting in the minute.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the May tw- May twenty-three, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Got that out of the way, uh. There's also minutes for September that we can approve because I see that the people that were here, were here in September. Uh, does anybody have any comments on a September? Twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three minutes.
I'm not seeing ours.
So when, when?
September?
Last.
I don't have September. Oh yeah, I got September, yeah.
That was the last meeting, yeah.
Uh, not in my packet, but. So I listed as.
It was the top one in my pile.
I remember, I read it actually. Did it this morning.
And that September meeting is when I said something about that car wash. I think they're, I think they're doing cars over there.
Could have been the first one.
Yeah.
I must have misplaced.
Tell you what, curse.
I'll make a motion to approve the September minutes, if anybody's, uh.
I'll second.
A motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. And I don't know if we can approve the June twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, would.
Probably should wait for at least three.
Well, we had three, we had, we had Commissioner, uh.
Yeah.
Whiteside, Commissioner Simonetta and myself here. Um, and I don't, I don't think that there's any issues with the, with these, uh, with these minutes either. They look fine. Uh, may you have a motion to approve, I'll second it. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and there's only one more left, it's the May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three meetings. And, uh, the same people were here, the only person that was not here was, uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, Simonetta. But, uh, Lenny, Christine, Corey, myself, we're all here, and this was the, uh.
Motion to approve May thirty?
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got a February.
February twenty-eighth.
Oh, that's right, yeah, right behind here.
We had all of the last two. We didn't approve any of the last years.
No, we kept, uh, they weren't ready and then, you know, then the people weren't here. So that's Tubbs, Mazada, Whiteside.
We got three people.
You weren't here. No, we got three people, yeah, that's good.
I make a motion, we approve these minutes.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Oh, clear the deck.
Clear the deck.
Kristen, thank you, I thank you, our town clerk, thank you.
Now they can be posted and people aren't thinking that we're shirking our duty.
That's bad. We don't usually, we, we've never done that.
Well, yeah, she can't post them unless we approve them.
Yeah, they get posted, they get posted regardless, and if you have modifications to them, that gets correct, the correction.
Oh, they do, they do get posted.
Do get posted and they.
Yeah, I didn't look.
They, you have to look at the future minutes, see the correct.
I hope to be here for January twenty-third, uh, because my wife is giving birth January twenty-fourth as her scheduled hospital. Delivery date, so.
Wow.
Oh, we're not gonna count on you, man.
Good luck, don't go.
It, it's a scheduled C-section for January twenty, her due date is.
Okay.
Uh, the thirtieth, but it's scheduled for January twenty-first. The doctor said yesterday, it looks good that we can make it to that date, but you never know, so. Now, when I look at dates, I'm like, oh, Jesus.
Good luck.
Find your toes, congratulations in advance.
Congratulations, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I will not be here January twenty-third.
How'd you get so lucky?
I've been. I'm sorry.
Don't you want to hear about the trucks?
My wife, my wife just booked the flights that night.
She did, huh? Oh, God.
We do have on the calendar, the twenty twenty-four meeting calendar, and, um, that. Um, should be adopted by January, so therefore we always put it, or try to put it on your November meeting. Um, the, our adminis, our assistant, our clerical assistant put together, um, the, um. Suggested dates, the January meeting is of course on your calendar from twenty twenty-three, so this coming up calendar. Um, for twenty twenty-four includes January of twenty twenty-five, um, as. Town boards and commissions always do, and she included the calendar with it. So that you can see where holidays sit and where other, you know, just get a estimate, but we would appreciate if. That could be adopted and are with or without modifications.
A second, yeah. Aye.
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 Also in your packet, you'll see we have the, um. Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies Quarterly Newsletter, and did this one have a location approval in it? That was in the previous one, maybe?
I'm not sure, it should have been in the summer one, that's what.
Yeah, we think it was in, um, a recent one, I, I'm sorry, I thought it was in this one, so. But we'll get you that as well, but that is always a good read. And a reminder that commissioner training is required for, um, the Land use. Board commissioners, um, some of you did some of the training, some of you may still have training to do. And if you have done training, if you could please send Polly an email, we're trying to keep track of the trainings.
Where is this, where is, where is this?
This one's down in, um, at the Clear, um, offices in Essex, is it, or no, Haddon, right, Haddon.
How often do we need to get, um, these training credits?
Every two years.
Okay, so, so several of us did the lawyer one, it was on a Saturday.
Right.
Six hours on a Saturday afternoon, so those of us that did that are still, we're all set for this.
Yeah, we're set for like another year and a half.
I would appreciate it if you could at least, if you could, um, submit the, uh, just an email. To Polly so that we have that record and can, we're, we're trying to make a log and. I, I just want to make sure we get every piece recorded in case of reporting to the.
When is, when is this one? Of, uh, February or?
Um, no, there, there's two in December, I think, oh, one's in February, no. It's an old one, these are old things.
And there are no online classes available? One, there's, I think there's only one in January or December there.
I had a problem with one of the ones that I sent out, I have emailed, the ones that have been coming in recently. Have been emailed to you, so this, this, um. The handout you got in your package looks as though it's an older one, because these.
There's training, it's, there's training according to this and. I don't know if it's twenty-three or, it was December. December fifth?
Yeah.
That's twenty-three?
Yeah.
Doesn't say twenty-three. Yeah, fifth, sixth and ninth.
So do we know how long?
Tuesday, Wednesday and Saturday.
They're four-hour classes?
If you go onto that website, it's, um, and I, I believe this email was also forwarded. If you go onto the website, it should have more information with regard to it. And the, if any of the training that you're, um, seeking. Says that there's a fee involved, then contact our office and it will register you because we did. There are a lot for the meaning in the budget.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have more details on those. I'm sorry, I don't have more details on those, I just. Every day we get something that, you know, and some of them are in the northwest corner and some of them are in the southeast corner and some of them are. I'm worried, some of them are remote, some aren't, it's just. Do you have anything else in them?
No.
Motion to adjourn? Aye.
Time is eight thirty-four. Night, everybody, thank you for assisting.
Thank you, see y'all in January.
Good night, Merry Christmas to everyone.